Okay, let's begin. I'd like to call this September 21st session of the Hoyoke City Council to order. The clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan.
Here.
Graney.
Here.
Jordane.
Here.
Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez. Lisi.
McGee.
Lopez.
Here.
McGee. McGivern.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
We had nobody sign up for public comment tonight, although that's not yet on the agenda anyways. But, okay.
Mr. President?
Counselor McGee.
May I make a motion to suspend the rules and take up a late file?
Late File F?
F, yep.
Okay, let me read the order. Introduced by Counselors Todd McGee and Kevin Jordane, ordered that the city present a proclamation to Kara Cunha for her nine years of service to the city of Hoyoke and the city council. Motion to suspend the rules to take up final action on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, under discussion, in a motion?
Make a motion to receive, adopt, and give the proclamation tonight?
Second.
Which we have, it's just so happened.
The proclamation fairy dropped about. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
If we receive and adopt it, I will escort her up and we'll get started.
A second.
Very brevity, we like that too. Okay. All right, without further ado, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, all right. Counselor McGee, escort our esteemed guest. As everybody knows, or hopefully it knows at this point, we do have some really sad news for us, good news for Kara, she's moving on to another great sort of turn and opportunity in her career. But Kara has been a fantastic city solicitor for us, has worked really, really hard over these past nine years, she's always been fair to deal with, she's worked really hard for the city, we really appreciate everything she's done for us, her longevity in that department, which has had a number of faces over the years, I think she's really been a bit of a rudder, if you will, to make sure that the ship is steered straight, and certainly she's someone that we rely on regularly to make sure that the trains run on time here. And Kara has done a fantastic job, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire body when we're really pleased to give this proclamation in her honor. Todd, I'll ask you to be kind enough to read the proclamation. But Kara, we're gonna very much miss you, we wish you the very best in everything that you do, and you'll be very much missed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I thank the council for accepting the citation and approving it, I know it was already made, I was just hoping you were gonna pass it. I ran to Patty Devine's house, and really how it all came apart is I found out that someone was leaving around Susan Egan Way, and I said, "Can I speak with you for a minute?" And she said, "What?" I said, "Is the rumor true?" And she said, "Yes, I am leaving." So I did ask her right up front, "Can I file an order, it'll be a late file, and try and get your proclamation for the 10 years of service?" She goes, "Todd, it's been nine." So she corrected me, as always. For me, Kara has been awesome to work with, just a very great attorney, came from Morrison Mahoney, which is a very nice law firm, but came to the city of Hoyoke. And I remember when she first got here, right away, I went to her with questions, and since my seat's always been around this area, I've always just leaned over the railing and said, "What do you think? What do you think?" And she's always just, just a great person, and an outstanding attorney. So when I heard the news, I'm very happy for you, but at the same time, I'm very sad for all of us, because you are our go-to person. So you're gonna be missed, like I said, once again, thank you to the city council for this last-minute thing, but Patty Devine, right away, without hesitation, said, "I will do it." I know she's retired from us, but I made her do it. And with that, it's an official resolution from the city council, saying that we are going to miss you, in recognition of nine years of superior service dedicated to the city of Hoyoke and the city of council, signed by President Kevin Jordane, attested to by Brendan Mersch-McGee, the city clerk, on September 21st, 2016. I know it's your last meeting, but thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I really do appreciate this, and Counselor McGee, to give me a heads-up. So of course, thank you to Counselor McGee and Counselor Jordane for filing the order. I also realized this morning that Counselor McGivern, and Leahy, and Tallman, along with Counselors Jordane and McGee, have been here for the entire nine years that I've been here. So I usually stare at the back of Jimmy's head, so it's nice to actually see your face tonight. I'll never forget my first interview with Mayor Sullivan, Counselor McGivern, when Joe asked me which two sports were invented in the city of Hoyoke. And I knew it was volleyball, but he was taking claim for basketball as well, which I didn't know, so...
But you do now.
But I do now, and luckily, that didn't stop you from hiring me, so nine years later, I'm very proud to have served under three mayors. It hasn't always been an easy job, but I truly have loved doing this job. And what I'll definitely miss most is all the people that I've had the chance to work with, which certainly are too many to name, but I do want to thank Sarah Carroll, who's been here for a number of years, and has also become kind of a fixture in the law department, and I know will do a great job in taking over, at least in the interim, as well as in leading the law department. So I'm excited for my new opportunity, and to continue to partner with the city in that role. I'll always have, definitely have a special place and fondness for the city of Hoyoke. But I can't say I won't be sad to not be here on Tuesday nights, and I'll have my Tuesday nights free again. So, thank you very much, I really do appreciate this, thank you.
Kevin?
Yes?
I could just say a couple of nice things about Kara as well.
Sure.
As she said, she's been here for nine years. Congratulations. She has been absolutely wonderful, and as a city council, it's worked pretty much tirelessly with the law department. I mean, we've had some fantastic, we've had Lisa Paul, we've had Stephen Skibbins, we had Dan Glanville, and I put her up with those people. I mean, we've had some fantastic city solicitors in the past, of course, I would have to say my father-in-law too, Pete Brady, however, I definitely put her in that realm. She's been wonderful, everything that I've ever wanted or ever asked for, she's gotten, usually within that day. And I'm proud to call her one of my favorite squires, and I'll say that without getting a workforce development slap against me, I'm sure. But I'm very sad to see you leave, there's two reasons why people leave the city solicitors' department, one is we don't appoint them, or confirm their appointment, which is, you know, I've been happy to do, second reason is because of money. We need to start paying these people what they're worth, and she's worth a lot. So congratulations, and I'll miss you.
Mr. President, could I suspend the rules to take late file B out of order? Sure. Oh, anything else? Counselor Lisi.
If I may, I just want to thank Kara for all the work that she's done, I know that when I was chair of the ordinance committee for a number of years, she and I had regular meetings throughout the year, in addition to our Tuesday night meetings, you know, pre-planning, and Kara's so bright, and just so hardworking, I think that the city of Hoyoke is really going to miss her. I know that you use the analogy of a rudder in keeping things on course, but in my mind, she's really been an engine of city hall and of, you know, the daily happening, so thank you Kara for all your work, you will be missed.
Great. All right. Kara, you're very much gonna be missed by all of us, really, did a great job. Peter?
Yeah Kara, thank you, and I really appreciate the work and the dedication you've put in the city over the years, and anytime I had a question, or needed to call your office, or even asked you something during the meeting, you've always had some really helpful advice, and it's made my job a lot easier trying to make a decision on something that's going on, a definite law matter, and I know there's countless hours that you put into just to get prepared for the, all the ordinances, and the time you put in, it's really been a pleasure working with you over the years, and I appreciate all you've done.
Great. Okay, so, now down to the meat and potatoes. Counselor Graney, you have something for us?
I'd like to suspend the rules to take late File B out of order.
File B, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is the appointment letter of Robert Listowski, for a new appointment to serve as a commissioner of the Park and Rec of the city of Hoyoke, Robert Listowski, 66 Nanotuck Street, Hoyoke. Mr. Listowski will replace Jennifer Gilberg, to serve a three-year term, said term will expire June 30th, 2019, it's submitted for our consideration by the mayor. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up this item at this time, and also to suspend the rules to take up some final action on this?
Yes.
Okay. That's before us, at this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Okay, is there a motion? Counselor Graney?
Yeah, I know it's uncustomary to do this, generally it goes to committee and so forth, but with the state of McKenzie Stadium and a few of the other parks, and disrepair and the, some of the repairs that are going on, I think it's critical that we get a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and I know of Mr. Listowski, because he's been active in youth baseball and football and all those things for many, many years. So I just thought we may be able to deal with this tonight, rather than send it to committee, it's up for the committee to do whatever they want to do.
Okay. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, I too, as the chairperson of the committee, normally we do pass these on to the subcommittees, so counselors can certainly ask any appropriate questions that they have, however, I believe everybody in this room was from Hoyoke, or, we're all from Hoyoke now, knows Bob Listowski, knows how wonderful of a person he is, he's certainly not a shy person. The only problem I have with Mr. Listowski, it's a big one, he's a Notre Dame fan, Boston College fan, but I think I can get over that for the night, and I think I certainly could vote for him.
Okay. All right, Counselor McGee?
I think the main thing to point out here is that they haven't been able to have meetings as commissioners, because they haven't had a quorum, so the real issue here is not to not do the vetting like we normally do, but allow someone to get in there so that they can actually have their meetings, and that's kind of the reason why we're doing it the way we are.
Good point. Counselor Lopez?
I know Mr. Listowski for years, I will vote in favor, but I would like to see a copy go to committee, to have an opportunity to talk to him, I would like to bring some ideas, some issues that we have with the Parks Department, and I think he will be great for the city, and he will be a great listener, and hopefully help us a lot.
If, right, to that point, Ryan, if we could also get a resume of Mr. Listowski, I mean, we know, I know him from coaching, obviously, sports, but, you know, that would be helpful, just for other people to get to know who he is, and just put something on the public record, and then we can also maybe have a conversation in committee as well, and talk about his thoughts on things, and why he wants this position. Counselor Lisi?
Thank you, I just wanted a second, Counselor Lopez's motion to perhaps pass the, confirm the appointment this evening, and send a copy to committee, I think especially when we are, you know, interviewing folks that have held appointments in their reappointments, giving folks a chance to meet and talk to these appointees, it makes sense to send a copy to committee, and have the council have a back-and-forth with the candidate.
I think your point's well taken, and the other point is, one, I want to make it clear, this is highly unusual, highly unusual, because then the next one, pick the board, conservation planning, well, my board's important too, and we can't meet, so I just want to bypass the whole confirmation process, so I don't want the word to get out that, you know, you make an exception for Bob Listowski, who is, you know, a wonderful, amiable person, but by the same token, you know, we're gonna hear the song and the dance at the next appointment for the next board, so we just have to be very careful that, you know, there's a particular set of circumstances regarding, you're a three-person board, and you're having some quorum issues here, and you have some weighty projects coming, and I believe the current incumbent to this is unable to continue to make the meetings, as I understand it, until, in the interim, until the new person was confirmed, but it would be good to hear from the nominee, so if we do do this, I just wanted to put that advisory out, so it's not like, you know, we're making some special deal for him. Counselor McGivern?
In lieu of the advisory, Mr. President, I will vote for the, doing the unusual, because not only do I know Bob Listowski like most of us do, and I think his character and integrity goes beyond an approach, he is, I've known him outside of the public light too, outside of his career, both with Hoyokai, and coaching, and teaching, and February 28th of 1984, as I approached a window at the Weston Hospital to look at, as a new father, to look at my new daughter, my elbow bumped with Bob Listowski, who was looking at his new daughter, and when you know someone on that level, the feelings, you know the type of person they are, and he is one man, one heck of a good man, in terms of being a father, a coach, a teacher, and so on, and I think he has the knowledge to bring to the Parks Commission, which is in need of a lot of meetings currently.
All right. So I think we have a consensus here, Counselor Tallman?
I agree with everything that's been said, and I think Counselor Lopez makes a good point, that we'd still like to have him in here and talk to him, I will definitely vote for Mr. Listowski, and, because it's needed for the quorum, for the meetings, and because there's a lot going on with the parks coming up, and I've known Bob for a number of years through sports, and from his dedication to the youth sports, and I think he'd be a great addition, it'd be nice to have him in to talk, I definitely will vote for him tonight, but I'd like to see him in, in committee.
Okay, great. So the motion before the body is that we confirm the appointment, suspend the rules for that purpose, but secondarily, that we also send a copy of the appointment letter to the Public Service Committee, that we ask that a resume be furnished for Bob, and that the committee be furnished that, and they can have him in at the scheduling of the chairman, at a future meeting, that's convenient for all involved, okay? So that's what's before us, that motion was made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can we go out of order and take Item 35 up?
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules to take up Item Number 35? This is related to the SAFER grant for the fire department, all in favor of doing that?
Aye.
I also move, Item Number 35, introduced by Counselor McGee, ordered that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the city council hereby accepts the provisions of the FEMA Federal FY 2015 SAFER Grant, and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. A motion?
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made at second to receive, and to pass the first reading, I will also read a com-
Prior to that, procedurally, can we suspend the rules, Mr. President, to allow the chief to speak and answer questions on this?
Sure.
Or do you want to wait, or how are you?
No, no, that's fine, yeah, I'll recognize that motion, one second, I did want to just read a communication from the chief to the mayor, which is dated September 12th, 2016. Dear Mayor Morris, the Hoyoke Fire Department has been awarded a SAFER grant by FEMA in the amount of $1,245,940, to fund 10 firefighter positions for two years, which includes full salary and benefits. Pursuant to Fiscal Policies Manual, Page 25, I'm respectfully requesting acceptance of these funds, and an appropriate account to be established for their utilization, respectfully submitted, John Pont, that was approved by the mayor, and that is why it is now before the body for our consideration and approval. A motion has been made, is there a second, to recognize the fire chief-
Second.
-for the purposes of answering questions on this item. Motion's been made at second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Do you want to turn it over to the fire chief at this point?
Yeah, at this time, I mean, the chief came in to the finance committee tonight for another grant that they received, $195,000 for fire equipment, or actually the suits that the firefighters wear, and actually wanted to discuss this, and I said, unfortunately, it's on the agenda, procedurally, we can't, therefore, I asked him to stick around, because as we all read in the paper, we did receive this grant, it's on tonight's agenda, but there is a time limit, it's a 30-day window on acceptance, maybe they could get an extension on that, but I said, stick around, see if we can take it out of order, and try and discuss it tonight, and see where we go from there. As I tell you now, we can always send it back to finance if you want, to get more discussion, I just figured since the chief was here, we might try.
There's a second item you sent?
No, 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 this is, in finance already, we took up another item, that's why he was here tonight.
Oh, I see.
And I asked him to stick around to-
But for tonight's voting, just this.
Right now, it's just this, for this issue.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
Without further ado, chief, if you could just kind of walk us through the SAFER grant, what this is all about, make sure your microphone's on, also touch on, this is for two years, 10 firefighters, and if you could also touch on what happens after the two years are up, is there any obligations of the city, any match, any things of that nature, that we should be mindful of as we're considering this? Chief Pont?
Okay, thank you, good evening, and thank you, Counselor, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and city council members. As you know, this is a SAFER grant, it's a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response for the fire department. This grant is put on by Department of Homeland Security and FEMA, and as you know, this will be our third SAFER grant in the last four years. What this does is it maintains or increases staffing in the fire department, and as you know, we're currently 12 firefighters short from where we should be, so this is gonna kind of bump us up, and diminish some of the brownouts on Engine 2, which is Ward 2, and at the same time, reduce some overtime costs. The grant is for two full years, full salary, full benefits, for 10 firefighters. The administration of the grant is gonna be the same as we've done in the past, we put the 10 firefighters on, this will probably take about six months to get them up and running, after we do the hiring process, send them to the fire academy, so we're kind of looking at an impact on this for the next fiscal year, if you count six or seven months ahead. Obviously, we could use the 10 firefighters, and I would appreciate your vote tonight, there is no match for this grant, and I see the hands going up, and I'm here to answer the questions, thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you very much, chief, and also Jeff, you guys always do a fantastic job coming down here, as you did tonight with the different grants that we had at the finance subcommittee prior to this meeting. My concern is, quite frankly, first of all, as you know, I'm very pro-public safety, I don't think I can recall when I voted against public safety, and any sense of the, I just don't think I can. However, one of the things that concerns me is back when President Bill Clinton was in office, he had a cops grant, and so he authorized communities to go out and hire police officers, to which a good example was Springfield. Springfield went up to the maximum amount of police officers, and I think it was for, I don't know, because I don't have it in front of me, but it might have been 10 years, maybe less than that, maybe two years, I don't remember which, but after that ran out, they weren't getting the attrition that they expected, they weren't getting the retirement, they weren't getting the people that were going to leave as they expected to, and they ran into a deficit because of that. Now, this is $1,245,940, which is a substantial amount of money, and how do you say no to that? I'm not sure if I could, however, how many people are you guesstimating going to be retiring in two years?
Well, actually, excuse me, this is gonna be over about two and a half, three-year period, really, when you look at, I said it's six months before we actually get them on the books, easily, we're gonna have 10 firefighters leave within that period of time, so that's not really a concern, we would manage the same way we have in the past, and get back down to where we were originally. The process itself, to get these 10 extra firefighters on, and actually get our staffing back up to where it should be, or close to it, to cut down on overtime and brownouts, is the real goal here, and Department of Homeland Security agrees with us on this, that's why they have these SAFER grants, to maintain or increase staffing.
No, and I agree with that too, and I hope the people are at home, knowing it's not the city council who had anything to do with these brownouts, we fully funded their budget, the fire department's budget this year, we're pleased to do, at least I was pleased to do so. So you're thinking easily 10 positions, so if a position, if I'm a firefighter for 25 years, I'm making X amount of dollars, a person you're going to hire for this position's gonna be making, you know, extremely less, so that's a savings, a cost savings there, correct?
Correct.
Do you have a guesstimate of how much of a savings that should be?
I do not, that's a lot of numbers.
My life's about numbers. All right, so, you know, I guess I'm just putting it out there, my concern is making sure that we have adequate funds in the future. I'm all for this, I'm going to vote for this, I think you guys need extra people, as you said, you're already shorted people, and let's get this up to speed, thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir, and I will mention that, unlike the police grant, after two years, you do not have to retain these hires, so if we're overstaffed-
Yeah, but we're not gonna lay these guys off, I mean, and ladies, but if we're gonna hire and train and produce great quality people, I'm the last person, I mean, if you plan, please let them know that, if you're gonna hire them, and you're gonna lay them off, I don't want to see any person walking out here with a pink slip.
Right.
I tell you that now.
And I would agree with that, but my point is, we won't get stuck having to retain these people if the city doesn't have the finances at that point, I know you're talking about Springfield, that's a different grant, this one is just two years.
Counselor President? Chief, and chief, thank you for coming down, guys, listen, you had said something about stopping some of the brownouts, I mean, can you just touch upon, I mean, we all know what it is, I'm not trying to exacerbate a problem, but, I mean, so, I'm assuming 10, I mean, why would there be any more brownouts?
Even when these people come on, the firefighters come on, we're still gonna have shortages on some days, vacations, sick time, or whatever the days off are, we'll fill in as much overtime as we can within the budget, but we're still gonna try to stay within our budget that the city council gave us, so that's why the brownouts are gonna continue, but at the same point, we want to reduce them, and with this extra staffing, it should reduce the brownouts, and hopefully overtime, because obviously you have more people on staff, you won't have to fill in as much.
I don't want, I'm not gonna take too much of your time, or our time, how many firefighters do you have right now?
Firefighters, 76.
76, so 10 more is gonna give us 86?
86.
Right, so what's the, I want to get to the point where there are no brownouts.
88.
So, all right, so there'll be two, we'll be short two guys?
Yeah.
Or two girls, or whatever?
Right.
Okay. And when you, when these guys get hired on, they're basically being hired on as grants, does, do you broach that topic of saying, you know, hey, you know, folks, this is a two-year job, I mean, the potential for them to move on to different communities as firefighters, they may not even be from Hoyoke, they don't have to be, they may move to other communities, or be appointed to different communities through this two-year timeframe, I mean, are they made aware of the fact that there is no obligation on the cities, although I'm not, I'm for doing that obligation, but I just want to understand that, these 10 guys get on, 10 guys and girls get on, two years down the road, they may be unemployed, and there's no unemployment benefits, or?
They are fully aware that they have been hired on this grant, they're fully aware.
All right. I just got one more question, it's gonna come to me in a second. I'll come back, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, chief, obviously, I'm gonna support this grant, I think it's necessary for the city, and I would also just ask you, there is reduction in force language in the firefighter's contract anyways, at some point, where the city is not gonna get stuck in the long run due to contractual obligations, is there not?
There's actually, the city council determines the size of the fire department, so in the contractual language, it's up to the city if what they want for a force size.
Yep. Counselor McGivern?
Chief, I understand the brownouts are partly due to the low staffing level, and partly due to the inadequate need, or inadequate overtime dollars in the budget. The 10 firefighters that you're gonna bring with the SAFER grant, and I commend you, because as you stated, this is the third SAFER grant in a row, and without it, we'd be in more dire straits than we are in terms of the budget, both with your department and all departments, but in the budget now, there is no monies for those 10 firefighters.
Correct.
Okay, so when you say, you know, these 10 firefighters are gonna work through the grant itself, the city is still employing them, and I'm not gonna pretend to be a lawyer, but we're still gonna be responsible for unemployment at the end, if they're laid off.
Yes.
And we're self-insured, so we will still have to pay unemployment dollars. Under the circumstances, normally I would say, don't hire people, but rather use overtime to replace and to keep staffing levels up, but under the circumstances that we faced for the last three to four years, and same as the last time we accepted the SAFER grant, I think it's a necessary evil. The only thing I would ask is, when the SAFER grant monies, revenues are going to dry up, is you prepare for that, and, you know, make sure the mayor, the city council knows it's- is you prepare for that, and, you know, make sure the mayor, the city council knows it's coming, and if we cannot find, by that time, the money to replace what we should have in your budget now, we're gonna have to prepare for that, or we're gonna be laying off people just to pay unemployment costs. And that happened in fiscal ninety-two, and that's because nobody was prepared for it, nobody thought ahead. But, I will vote in favor of this, again, nice job, because we need it, and your department needs it, and I think Counselor Leahy said, you know, perfectly, you know, it's, it's necessary, not only for public safety, but for what this city needs and wants as a service, and great job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm all set, thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thanks, Chief, for coming down, I'm very much in favor of this grant, and I was there when the, you had the announcement down at the fire headquarters, and glad to be there to hear from the state rep Vega and our Congressman Neal about getting this money, funding for the city of Hoyok and for the work you do, and your Deputy Chief, Preskowsky, getting this grant, and I know it's a lot of work. My concerns are what Counselor Leahy brought up about, you know, the funding at the end of it, and and I know my thing is probably thinking that by three years are up, you'll probably have the retirements of maybe eight to ten people, and that's what, you know, my feelings were on this grant, but I really, I give you and your fire department, and I know you don't like to take credit, it's the men and women of the fire department that go out there day in and day out to get this, get the job done. The, you know, the importance of this and getting this three years out of four years is, is my thing is, when you come in budget time, it's always about the overtime dollars, and hopefully this will alleviate some of that overtime money that's being spent, you know, by a lot, the police and the fire department, but especially to keep those numbers down, and of course, for the protection of the city, and throughout all areas of the city, less brownouts, and I really think that's an important thing for the public to know that, you know, we're gonna try to have almost a full complement of firefighters, and it's beneficial overall. And a lot of people don't realize, they don't hear about fires day in and day out, but the number of calls you go to on a yearly basis, I'm sure you can give us those numbers, are really a lot more than most people realize, so, thanks for the work you do.
Thanks, sir.
Counselor McGivern?
Chief, just quickly, we had a few fires already, how has that impacted our overtime account for you?
About, right about now, we're about fifty thousand dollars spent this year in overtime, and yes, fires actually impact that, call back staff.
So-
And events in the city too, and we have to hire firefighters to do events in the city.
Alright, so it's been impacted a little more than normal because of the issues that popped out?
Yes.
Alright, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
If I may, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Deputy Chief Preskowsky, he writes all these grants, they're very competitive, trust me when I say that. People are very jealous of Hoyok for receiving these, but quite honestly, it's his writing, he's doing all the stuff, he's been a great asset to the fire department, so I just want to thank you, Jeff.
They accept grants in crayon, Jeff?
I think I have promotion, for God's sake. He's at the top of the chain, huh?
He's at the top, he's at the top.
Trying to help you, Jeff, I don't know what to do.
Thanks, Jeff, we appreciate it, thank you. Thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep. There's no further discussion?
Motionists?
All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
All opposed, all moved?
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, just pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adoption of item number thirty-five, which is approving the acceptance of this grant and authorizing the establishment of a fund for the purposes of administering said grant. Clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor, a no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Absolutely.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the SAFER grant, and we thank the fire department for their, again, for their hard work on that.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to take out order eleven A?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up item number eleven A out of order?
Second?
Let me just make sure there's no other compendiums that go with it. Eleven A, both community, yep, that covers it.
Good word, Cap.
Great job, Mr. Counselor Brezneren? Motion's been made and seconded to take up eleven A out of order, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Eleven A is a report from the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that Division Three entitled Purchasing Department of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances be reviewed and amended as necessary for consistency with the thresholds set by Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-B, order that the city of Hoyok amend Chapter Thirty of its Code of Ordinances to provide for public procurement of outside legal counsel. Said Chapter Thirty-B, Section One, Subsection Fifteen exempts procurement of legal services from public bid laws. The order would supersede state law and increase consumer protection. There were multiple orders by counselors Bartley and Soto consolidated into this, as well as some items filed by myself, ordered to strengthen the procurement laws, the city of Hoyok will also put police over towing and any other public towing services out to bid, at least biannually, that was considered, but that portion was not done in the final package, have considered the same and recommend that the order be adopted with the attached legal language, and this is approved, was voted out of committee four to zero, four to one, excuse me, counselors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez. Actually, four zero, counselor Lisi wasn't at the last ordinance meeting. Counselor Bacon, do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. So we had brought this from committee to the full council at our last meeting, and there were a number of questions, because in spite of the fact that we had had at least three or four, if not five, separate meetings on it, there were folks who had not had an opportunity to fully review all of the details in it, and there were remaining questions. So it came back to committee, we took it up again at our last meeting, we did not have any other counselors present. My understanding is that questions that were remaining had been asked and answered. We did a general review of the ordinance during our committee meeting, and the committee has recommended it back to the full council in the form that it was initially presented, so there are no amendments before you compared to what you received at the last meeting. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Counselor McGivern?
Mr. President, I'd like to speak against the adoption of this ordinance. The last meeting, when it first came out, I raised the concern that the, it's an all-encompassing package of several, some very important, that I believe can be and should be passed, and some that I believe, I'm not in favor of for reasons which I'll try to state very briefly. I did attend the ordinance committees, including the more recent one, and I'm aware of the committee's hard work, I'm aware of the intentions of the makers of the orders, and the committee and what they tried to do. I heard the concerns of, of members who were about certain parts of this ordinance, and I heard the concerns of the city solicitor, and I'd just like to highlight some of that real quick. The Thirty-B is a wonderful law, and I think our ordinance should mimic the state statute, but the state statute is what is the most important one. We have to abide by it regardless of our ordinance, and I think anything, anybody understands what purchasing is about, everybody understands the importance of Thirty-B, but Thirty-B doesn't work in all areas. I noted that many years ago, we went out on a bid referral for, for the turf, for the alumni field project up at the high school, and the company, and the product that we're looking for was a wonderful product, which is similar to what we got. The one difference was, is a, another company, and actually won a constitutional court battle on the other, on the other side of the state, did the same product but without the membrane, and that membrane is what keeps the pellets in the turf, and anybody that has an athlete that plays or has played on the turf understands the importance of keeping all the pellets in the turf as possible. Thirty-B, you know, forced us to, to take a, less than, than up to spec of the product that we wanted, and this could happen in a lot of areas. I believe the state statute does not recognize, it's changed in the last five years, I think we should update our, ours to what the state statute, but over the years, it is always allowed for certain professional services to be given to the discretion of the appointing hiring authority. The law department, if they're hiring an outside counsel, they can, you know, they should be able to hire a counsel, not the cheapest person who bids, but a person who fits the needs of the particular task they're hiring for. Anytime you have a professional service, contractors can come in, and if all things are equal, it'd be great, you would take the lowest bid, all things are not always equal, and I think that's why we have to be careful. The other part of this, which, which I don't agree with, is, I believe it's called the pay-to-play reform, which involves our, the campaign finance structure of donations that are accepted to local candidates, local municipal candidates. I believe that is a regulatory part and very well overseen by the state finance committee. They are the ones that regulate, and I think most of us, the money that we accept are, is fifty dollars and left, less the price of our, one of our campaign fundraisers, and we occasionally get the above fifty-dollar donation from some close supporters, family members, friends of that nature, and I don't, I don't think there's that many problems within the municipal finances and donations throughout the elections that I've participated in over the years. I believe that the pay-to-play just goes a little bit too far, and it would be a very cumbersome ordinance to follow. Also, there's no one to regulate it, there's no regulatory board that can look at this ordinance and enforce it. So it would just be up to the candidate to say they agree with it or disagree with it. Only the state finance structure itself can enforce, and they're gonna enforce a state statute, not a local ordinance, if it's different, especially if it's different to the state statute. So for those reasons, I, there's parts of this I would like to vote for, but because it's a package at this time, I'll be voting no.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, let the president speak.
Second.
Thanks. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the president briefly to address this item, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all moved? Okay, so, just a couple different things. One is, in most, most of all these points, we had a colloquy in committee, and we've discussed these for a few meetings, although Joe wasn't at the last meeting, we did go to address these different points, so one, one thing that we were able to confirm that was sort of misstated at the last meeting, albeit not intentionally, was that we changed the job descriptions of the different procurement officers in the department, none of that was changed, that was taken by the law department, word for word is exactly the same in this ordinance. Secondly, is, the genesis of much of this comes as a request from the superintendent of the Dr.'s Reich. He says that the thresholds that we have in place now are really just way too low. He states that it's become very, very cumbersome to have to follow all of these regulations, because Thirty-B, you have to, those are the minimum requirements. A city can have more restrictive requirements, not less restrictive requirements. So with respect to the lower thresholds that we have, where all these small items have to go out to bid, as a matter of fact, under the recent Municipal Reorganization Act, and Municipal Modernization Act, I think they've even increased the threshold up to thirty or forty thousand dollars now, where I believe in Hoyok, we're around ten, so just to give you a sense of all these things that are attaching. So we looked at that and said, we're just gonna mirror what the state law says, so that's what we did. Next component was issues regarding the tow contract. After a lot of debate and discussion, there was a different schools of thought regarding putting this out to bid, or allowing this to be just simply advertised, the mayor decides. At the end of the day, that, the latter process was picked, and that it's gonna stay very similar as it is today, with the only exception that they have to at least put up some sort of public notice, that the mayor is going to make a decision. So theoretically, towing companies could at least know that they're being, that the mayor's gonna even make a decision, they can put their thing through, but he ultimately is gonna pick whomever. So the last component of this ordinance is the pay-to-play rules, the view, which I think has been played, there was a number of, some articles that generated in the newspaper around this early this year, which, we look at that, we look at what happened to a former mayor in Chickaby regarding donations from tow contractors, we look at all of this, we look at the tens of thousands of dollars that are being generated in donations coming from people holding these contracts to the chief executive, okay, of the city, it certainly does give and shake somewhat, or concern public confidence that people who are receiving these contracts, there seems to be, just by looking at the finance reports, a direct correlation between people getting these contracts and making large tens of thousands of dollars in donations to the chief executive, holding these contracts, it's just, there's, I mean, to the point where I think it's twenty-five or thirty percent of all the dollars being raised are coming off some of these contracts, is that really what you want? Now, let me say, this is all one hundred percent legal, okay, currently. The law, as, is spoken to as far as the administrative burden, current law only requires that they disclose the donations from OCPF on these reports, it doesn't however preclude people from making the donations. So if you were to make a thousand-dollar donation, and then your wife makes a thousand-dollar donation, and your kids make a thousand-dollar donation, and the manager of each department of your company makes a five-hundred-dollar donation, or a thousand, I mean, do you really have to go to Harvard to make the connection here? What is going on, it's quite obvious, these are very lucrative contracts, very lucrative contracts, and I would suggest to you, look at the amount of donations before people were rewarded these contracts, then look at the reward of the contract, then look at the amount of donations made after the contract is awarded. Do your own detective work, it's, you know, all one hundred percent legal. Personally, I think we're better than this as a community, I think we as a city council have to ensure that without question, what we're doing here is beyond reproach, that people are getting contracts exclusively because it is in the best interest of taxpayers, and that that is the best person to receive the contract, that there is no corollary between one or the other, or that there is some sort of economic benefit annuring from the granting of these contracts, okay? So that's why we make laws here, in many, many regards. So I think this is outstanding legislation, I think this is decades overdue, quite frankly. I wish we could have got to the point where this was done twenty years ago, in many regards. So now we actually have this before the body, so have absolutely no concern. Now, as far as the enforcement of this component, it's required as a disclosure when one is applying for this contract, that they have to disclose if they have maintained the rules set forth in this ordinance. So it's, the burden is on the person receiving the contract. We have very good providers of these contracts, they do a great job, there is no issue there, and we want the mayor to pick who he wants or she wants to have and hold all these different city contracts, but we just don't want to have a situation where there's any question that any of these transactions are for any reason other than for the best interests of the taxpayers of Hoyok. And I think this is why there's pay-to-play legislation all over the country in all kinds of circumstances, and I think this is something that's really long overdue. So, that is, I think I broke down the different four components of the changes, and if anybody else wants to say anything else, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I agree with all the, hopefully that answers most, most of any council's questions. I just want to speak to this thing about enforcement. It's a, it's a valid point, it's the first time I've heard it raised, but just so every councilor here knows, and the president stated rightly, we can't, we have to follow state law, the only time we can make a tweak to it is if we make a stricter, firmer law, and that's what we're doing here. We didn't put an enforcement provision in our ordinance, but that doesn't mean procurement laws are not enforced, and there is, there's a provision in state law for that, and the exact site is Section Seventeen of Chapter Thirty-B, and you can read it for yourself. So certain contracts can be avoided if procurement laws are violated, and certain, and certain people can be fined civil penalties of a couple thousand dollars. So, the enforcement is in the law as it is, so- So the enforcement is in the law as it is, so I just want you to feel confident in that regard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Leacy.
Thank you. I think that we put a lot of work into the procurement law amendments that we see, and I'm really happy with ninety-five percent of that work product. And I just feel very similar to Council McGivern, where, you know, we created this omnibus legislation where it's an all-or-nothing situation, and I would rather see the towing contracts under a thirty B compared to bid process. I had raised those concerns in the committee meeting. Additionally, I think that something related to campaign finance laws could be better appropriated to some sort of like campaign finance or larger ethics type of legislation. And to, you know, tuck it into this procurement law, I think it's just, it just feels like it's going a little bit beyond the scope of procurement law. Sorry about the.
No problem.
It's going, it's going a bit beyond the scope of the procurement law, and I would like to see them teased out. I made these comments in committee, I'm making them again here, I'll be voting no. And it's really unfortunate, because like I said, I really do like ninety-five percent of the procurement law provisions that we created. I think that they are necessary, but the pay-to-play, as well as the campaign finance laws being tucked into procurement is a deal breaker for me.
Counsel Graney.
I'm going to support this legislation because I think transparency is a great thing, and I think that this is something that's long overdue, and I think we, as a city council, should be more transparent than anybody else, so I support this legislation.
Any other, Counsel Vacan?
I would just like to add that I really feel very good about this legislation. I think it is a really good government piece of work that we've done in committee. A lot of work went into it. Yes, there was debate, and there was some disagreement, which we expect is going to happen when we're dealing with important issues. But this is legislation I'm very proud to have been part of, and I hope that supermajority will support it tonight. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments? Okay. Oh, Counsel Roman.
Yes, Mr. President, colleagues, after reading in the legal form, the whole order completely, I completely agree with, again, a majority of it as well. The only sticking point for me was the provision E, simply because of the campaign finance reform laws, but I'm going to support tonight's legislation because I think it's good. I think that for me, if E was taken out, I think a lot of our colleagues here would be a lot easier because it's in line with OCPF and the funding or donating component, but I think that the mandatory reporting section, everything else was, to me, critically important, it's just that provision E. I think that's the biggest sticking point for a lot of our colleagues tonight, so I would offer, you know, again, I'm not sure if this is doable or not, an amendment to remove that provision tonight, if the colleagues just want to debate that provision, because I think that's the largest sticking point for a lot of my colleagues.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Okay. Motion's been made, it's seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion that the passage be enrolled.
Okay, motion's been made, it's seconded to pass the passage be enrolled. There is, oh no, no, just ordained.
Ordained, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. That's under the old.
I'm putting in the old ones.
Yeah. Motion's been made, it's seconded to pass the passage be ordained, there is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance, a no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
No.
Leacy?
No.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven ayes, three nays.
By your vote, you've adopted the ordinance change. Thank you, colleagues, on that. And we're, is there any other rule suspensions on that? Okay. Hearing none, we're back up to, we had two items laid on the table. Is one ready to go, Brenna and Ryan, or? Okay. So I'm told item number one is now ready for us and our consideration, if someone would like to make a motion to remove item one from the table. Okay, so, is there a second? Motion to remove item number one, which comes to us from the city clerk and Ryan. This is the minutes of our special meeting of June thirteenth. All in favor of removing from the table?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. So counselors, this was our meeting where we did the budget, we had a bunch of various amendments, there's all the different, the clerk did a great job to put in the pages and pages of minutes, and Ryan has also put in all of the different sort of one-page narrative on that as well. So it does appear ready to go for your consideration. Counsel McGivern?
Did you get copies of it?
Absolutely. Was this put in their packets, or? This was submitted in your packet.
I didn't have anything in my packet, I have September sixth.
September sixth, yeah, I didn't get that one.
Did you happen to mail that out to them? Well, let me, let me, let me say this. The cover sheet is just the two items from the agenda, so that you've already had. You received the next, all pages, it's quite a lengthy document, all pages was the list of things that we approved and disapproved as line items in the budget.
I can make it simple, Mr. President, the only thing I questioned about this was the narratives of people speaking that evening. It was not included in the original package that we got.
Correct.
I've not received an amended package since then.
Correct. So this is the narrative, I'm not sure why, the assistant claims he mails it, I'm not sure why you didn't receive it, but it's not, it's one page. You want me to read it? No.
I would just ask for a copy and lay it on the table.
Okay. Have that emailed to everybody and, or a hard copy, okay? All right. Okay, motion is to put it back on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Get them a copy of that, the whole thing, okay? Item two was an item that we tabled as a courtesy to Counselor Sullivan. Counselor, we, are we ready to go with that, or do we need some more time on that? Because I believe, that was an order you were affiliated with, but I know you were away because of the passing of your mom. So the council, as requested, tabled that item. Counselor Vacan, are you prepared to speak on that, or?
I can briefly summarize if the counselor wishes to take it off the table.
Do you want to go forward with this, or do you need more time?
Or we can leave it there until we have another meeting.
For two, for two weeks. Do you have a preference?
Well, it's, if I'm reading this correctly, it's recommend that the order has been complied with. I disagree with that, I don't believe that the order has been complied with, I'd like to see it go back to committee.
Okay. Well, to take action, we're going to have to take it off committee, but my point is, do you feel you have the information you need to vote one way or the other? To send it back to committee, or to take final action?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So then why don't we take it off the table? We'll need a motion to do that.
So I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
Okay. Motion is to take up item number two off the table. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. The Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order to amend Appendix B of Wetlands Protection, Section One Purpose, Section Two Applicability, Section Three Jurisdiction, to add language that would recognize the canal system is not a part of the natural wetlands or waterways of the region and are not in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, the canals are a mechanical component used in the service of the public as described in Section Eight Exceptions. Half considered the same, recommend that the order has been complied with. Counselors Vacan, Jordan, and Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, not to belabor it, but.
Just a motion.
Well, the motion that we had made to the committee was that it be complied with.
Okay. So to adopt the committee report?
Correct.
Okay. At least for discussion purposes, we'll start there and see if that or something else is going to happen. So we have a motion from Counsel Vacan that the committee report be adopted, which is that the order has been complied with. Is there a second to that? Second, under discussion, Counsel Vacan.
Okay. I keep jumping the gun tonight. I must be in a hurry. So anyway, in committee, we had a very lengthy discussion. The point of the order was very technical in nature around the mechanical component. And when we got into the depths of the jurisdiction, if you will, of the Conservation Commission, they said, well, essentially, this part is correct, there are two other areas of their jurisdiction that would also apply to the canals. And so there was a fairly lengthy explanation of how the different things would apply even though one aspect does not apply. And they brought in a number of documents and went through a rather detailed explanation of how the other aspects would apply to the canals. And so on that basis, the members of the committee voted to consider it complied with in that the questions were answered, if you will, and the explanation did extend beyond the actual technical order, but did answer the broader question. So that is how it got to the council in the first place.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yeah, they did come forward, they said there were two other areas. We put out in front of them where the courts had decided against the local conservation commissions, this is where they brought up the two other areas. I had asked them to specifically state which these other two areas were, that they thought they had jurisdiction, but also to prevent, to present documentation and evidence where that did give them authority. I don't believe they ever produced that. I thought they said they were going to come back with more information regarding that. So I'd, I'd still like, I'm not at all happy with what they've presented, I'm not satisfied that the order has been complied with. What we're saying is that the canals are not part of the natural wetlands or waterways of the region. All right? That they're a mechanical component and not subject to their authority. Yeah, and quite possibly even some legal opinion on it also.
To make a motion, we send it back to committee. Second. Motion's been made, it's seconded to refer back to the ordinance committee. Any discussion of that? And we'll work to get the counselor his information. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Public comment, we had none, as I stated earlier. So we're on to communications, of which we're up to item three, which is, comes to us by way of the city clerk and our administrative assistant. It's the minutes of the September sixth meeting. Is there a motion to receive and adopt?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number four is a communication from the city auditor, it's regarding the FY 2015 audit.
Motion to receive and refer to finance.
Yeah, motion's been made, it's seconded to receive, refer to finance. Ryan, could you ask if we can get, if we haven't already received a PDF version of this? I'd like to read this, this is a good, good reading if you like municipal finance stuff. It's sort of, not quite akin to Where the Bodies Are Buried, but it's, it is, it is, tells you different material weaknesses, or deficiencies, or things they need to work on around City Hall. So if you like that kind of reading, like, which I do.
Can I have a copy of that?
Not that I'm particularly normal, but Counsel Leahy?
I guess I'm not normal either, may I have a copy? Can I just have a copy?
Absolutely. So if, could you make arrangements to have Counselors PDF that?
Thank you.
You might want to pick a piece here, pick a piece there, you learn a lot of things in that. So, motion is to receive, refer to finance with a copy, electronic version, because it's quite thick, to all counselors. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Item number five comes to us also by way of the auditor. This is the monthly budget reports for the General Fund and Wastewater Treatment Plant for June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, so that's our year-end ones for the last fiscal year, and July thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Motion, receive and refer to finance.
Okay, motion's been made, it's seconded to receive, refer to finance. Could I have a copy to Counsel Jordan of the year-end portion of that, the June thirtieth? That tells you all the final numbers on transfers.
Could you copy Counsel Graney on that, too?
Maybe if you do a PDF, just send it to everybody. I think you can always delete it, but good stuff to read. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to take six through ten as a package.
Second.
Motion's been made, it's seconded to suspend the rules to take items six through ten as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number six is the Board of Health minutes of July fourteenth. Item number seven is the Fire Commission minutes of June twenty-first. Item number eight is the DPW minutes of July eleventh. Item number nine is the Sewer Commission minutes of July eleventh. Item number ten is the Stormwater Authority minutes of July eleventh. Is there a motion to receive these?
Received.
Okay. Motion's been made, it's seconded to receive these. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Received. We had no petitions this evening, albeit we have a late-file communication coming in on one, on that medical marijuana petition. I wanted to one, so we're up to president's report, I'll try and make this as brief as possible. One is, I wanted to again extend the thanks to the Big E, to our colleagues, everybody that joined us yesterday for the parade, we had a nice turnout of counselors, it was a really nice event, also our city clerk came as well. Gene Cassidy, once again, was very hospitable, him and the Big E committee, we're very thankful. In recognition of that thankfulness, on behalf of the city council, I was very pleased to present a proclamation to Gene on behalf of all of us as a membership. It also happens to be the hundredth anniversary of the Big E this year, so real big deal. So it was a beautiful night, and I'm glad we were able to do that. Secondly, I wanted to point out, we have condolences out to a couple of our colleagues, and I was able to send out recently some memorial contributions on behalf through our flower fund, one to Mike's mom, who recently passed away, that's a donation to the Providence Ministries for the Needy. The other is Linda's stepmother, who recently passed away, and it was requested a donation to the American Legion. So I wanted to also give them our condolences as a body as well. I will, I believe, cover it. That, I'll just leave it at that for the president's report, and obviously, we had our kind words to say for Kara, who we're going to very much miss, and as it's been explained to me, I believe there's a posting that's ending, at least initially, September twenty-third. We'll see what the fishnet brings in for candidates, and then I'll certainly be in conversation with the mayor. It is a appointment duly by the mayor and the president of the city council for Kara's successor, so I'll certainly be working with Alex to make sure, and I will run this appointment by all of you individually, I will talk to each of you about who we end up being, and so you, you as well feel comfortable about who our successor, her successor will be in that instance. Oh, there was actually one other thing I did want to mention to you, and that was regarding an order that I had filed at the last meeting regarding remote participation at city governmental meetings. There's a provision of the open meeting law, which is apparently not that old, that allows the chief executive to have the authority in the regulations to allow people to not actually physically appear as members at various municipal meetings. So whether it's the housing authority, theoretically, the city council, I believe there's a rule that a quorum has to be physically present. But in addition to that, you could have, you know, someone calling in from Florida, I suppose you'd have maybe a monitor at their desk, you know, maybe I would be by monitor from, you know, some sunny place with a, with a umbrella drink, chiming in as to my thoughts of the meeting, and, and sort of weighing in and holding court from some sunny island somewhere. Well, I'm pleased to say that the mayor also shares my one hundred percent opinion, that this is not a good idea, that this is not a good policy for the city to do. You can't say Housing Authority you can do at Park and Rec, you can't. City Council, you can't. School Committee, you can. It's an all or nothing encompassing policy. So, one, I wanted to thank Kara for doing the legwork on that, to research that. And I also want to thank the mayor for joining me in opposition to that idea. And it's my understanding that the Housing Authority, which has already started doing it some months ago, is going to be stopping doing that. So everybody that wishes to be at a meeting will actually be at the meeting physically. So we're happy to hear that. So I just wanted to report back that that issue has now been resolved. Okay? And I'm also pleased to recognize Counselor Roman for an announcement.
Yes, thank you, Counselor, City Council President Jordan, and my colleagues on your desk this evening, and to anyone watching at home. We, I put a big poster for you all and a little save the date, so you could all take it to your places of employment. Brenna, don't worry, I have your stack right here. You are all invited to the inaugural Taste of South Holyoke Fest, and I'd like to also commend and thank, actually, Counselor Joe McGivern, who at this year's Christmas party, when I was a council-elect, actually talked to me about this idea. So some of the residents have this idea, and I want to just thank all of you for your support. It's this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. The stage will actually be at Capri Pizza's parking lot. It'll be an outdoor lounge and stage area. A lot of the local acts are reflective of the neighborhood, and 90% of the performers are from Holyoke, which is great. We have 15 participating restaurants this year. And all of my colleagues, you are all invited at 11 o'clock, where we will be on the main stage honoring Capri Pizza for their 50th and Turn Hall, which turns 145 years this year. So you're all invited to attend throughout the day. Come eat, come enjoy, listen to the music. And at Sushi Park will be the youth zone. We have a karate demo, face painting, a clown, and there'll be tons of walkable restaurants. And we have to thank the amazing Marcot Ford. They're providing a shuttle service for free for any resident to be able to access all the areas all day from 10 to 8:00 p.m. So it'll be a good time.
Do you want us at 11:00 a.m.?
Yes, 11:00 a.m.
Well, Counselor Roman, I just want to, once again, say, I've said it a million times, but I'll say it one more time, we're just really impressed at your hard work. Once again, you're really doing, you're going out of your way to work hard for the People Award too, and it's much appreciated by many. So, and once again, this is no exception. Great job. Okay, so without further ado, we move on to reports of committees. We first up with ordinance. We already took care of 11A. We're now on to 11B. 11B is a report from the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the city of Holyoke urge the mayor during contract negotiations with all union contracts that stronger provisions for residency requirements be implemented. Have considered the same. Recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors Vacan, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counselor Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had general discussion within the committee, and it was noted that we have attempted in the past to strengthen ordinances in this regard. And so the committee is strongly supportive of the sentiment, and we see it generally as an enforcement issue within the city largely. But I'll defer to the maker of the order, Counselor Nelson.
Counselor Roman.
Relative victory. Any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I follow this motion again, and, you know, my new tenure here, looking at the budgetary process, looking at a lot of these things with regards to all these budget and department heads, to me, it's just critically important that the chief executive, and not to say he's not doing this job, but that we strengthen our local residency requirements. And I applaud the body for this, but this is just more of a refresher for that. We need to strengthen our residency requirements, because it's just critically important, both morale, we're talking about paying people what they deserve and the money they make. We're talking about the city in dire needs. I would like to know even how many of those working in the city or making money here are actually living in the city, and that goes across all boards. I think if we as counselors are required to live in this city, then so should all the employees. And I just think it's a good morale booster on both ends. So that's it.
Thank you.
Just, Mr.?
Yes, Counselor Grady.
Just one quick question. Did you look into any of the legal ramifications of this, Counselor Roman? Because there may be some.
So this isn't binding, it's just recommending that the mayor and the chief actually just include those stronger provisions. That comes from the Law Department, and I met with Kara beforehand and Alex. So it's just, we're not demanding or making it binding. It's simply stating that in these contract renegotiations that are coming up now, that stronger language for residency requirements be implemented. So it's not us forcing anyone's hand.
Well, I'm very much in favor of that. I just want to make sure there's no legal ramifications. Okay. Oh, Counselor LeBron Martinez?
I, you know, I support this type of order, but at the same time, I want us to understand as, I work as a career counsel on a daily basis, and we have challenges sometimes to be able to find the right candidates for certain positions in the city for some companies. And I don't want this to be the stick hold. If we really are looking to bring the right candidate for the position, that that will be a limitation. I just want to make that as a statement, so.
Just one thing I wanted to point out, that I think was part of the conversation that happened in committee, was some concern around people who are getting these positions because of their residency in the city, i.e. police, i.e. fire. You basically cannot get hired in these positions because of the preference rules unless you're a resident of the city.
Right.
Okay? And what is occurring is, after the one-year waiting period, bye-bye. And so it's really taking the whole process of why people are being given these preferences and why they're being selected in the first place, and turning it on its head. People are gaming the system. And so as soon, you got the job because you live in Holyoke, and then as soon as you, one year later, bye. And it's amazing the amount of leakage that's going out. You know, if it were only the one or two, you'd say, well, that, these things happen. But I think some of the concern is around this. Counselor Lisi.
I think, at the end of the day, I've, in the past, supported residency requirements for fire, for example. But my recent experience has felt more that the residency requirements can be a sticking point, as Counselor LeBron Martinez just mentioned. Especially in the case of, you know, Kara, for example. She didn't meet the residency requirement, therefore she couldn't actually apply to be our city solicitor. And I think that, you know, in this case, and I think that if we were to look more closely at who's leaving the city, they're leaving the city because either we have a residency requirement, or we're not paying enough to attract residents from within the city to take these positions. And so I think that we're losing talent, and I'd rather see us build up the city's reputation and resources and abilities, rather than create what seems at times to be somewhat arbitrary of a residency requirement, especially if it's not going to be a department head position. I mean, I think there is some merit. However, I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the residency requirement anymore after seeing numerous people leave, and I feel like we're losing talent. And so I don't want to put any more restrictions on who could take, you know, key roles and retain the institutional knowledge and training. I mean, as you're saying, like, we're losing a lot of people after a year or so working here. They're working, you know, they're building their training and experience and then going off to other communities, because we're not offering competitive salaries. So I would like us to see us leave the net far and wide, attract talent and develop talent as we can.
The only point I was making was, not to in any way contradict what you're saying is, but the people I was referencing were, they're staying. They're still working here. But what they're doing is, there's a requirement that you have residency for one year while you're in the first year of employment, and after that, there's not that binding residency. But they're only getting it because they agreed to that. So that was my only point.
I see that, yeah.
But that isn't really applicable to the positions you're talking about.
Mr. President?
One minute. Counselor Roman.
Yeah, and so I completely agree with the sentiments of Counselor Lisi. And pay, we have the pay structure that's, you know, in committee, and that's one conversation. But even for me, in conversations regardless of what the department heads, we also have this thing where there's interim department heads that are in limbo, that really are the department heads. And then you have other positions that are behind them that are sitting in limbo. It's a confusing process. And that's just me as a new counselor. And regardless across the board, you're absolutely right, Mr. President. For me, the residency requirements, and that's what I'm seeing, is on those frontline positions, is individuals that get the position and then they move away. My thing is, it should be the opposite. And especially if we address the salary component and attracting individuals based on salary, then there should be a provision where you're required to move in, as we would do with any other department head. But for me, I even think there needs to be, and that was another one of my orders, stronger provisions for all department heads across the board. In our current charter, and I sat with Kara on this, some department heads are exempt, others aren't. I think across the board, if we're going to pay you, and the pay issue's separate, if we're going to pay you top dollar to be our department head, then you should be required to move into this, into this community, just like the receiver, just like the police chief, just like the fire chief. Across the board, our department heads should be living in this city, and that should be a requirement. The pay is a separate issue, and you're right, and you're absolutely right. It's more of a frontline thing, and Kara actually provided me, and I'm thankful, to all the different unions that the mayor deals with. And there's close to, I think, five to six of them, correct Kara? I think there was, the list you sent me? A few more. All those lists of unions, what are the residency requirements in all of those contracts? Those are the things that I want to see, and strengthen those exactly, on the frontline defense, but including in our own provisions and our own ordinance. We need to strengthen that for department heads, because again, I'm sad Kara's leaving, but that quasi interim department head, but then there's an open position, we need to fill those department head positions and make sure they're living in our city. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to agree with what I think you were saying, is that somebody who was hired in the city of Holyoke that's working here and works for a year in the city, maintains employment in the city and still moves out of the city. We want to prevent that.
Well, absolutely.
Okay.
Right.
That's what I wanted to straighten out.
Well, it's not really fair to, it's like, the whole reason the state civil service created residency preference is so that a community, particularly urban communities like ours, organically grow the middle class of the city and our better-paying jobs are people living in here. It's why people have residency rules. So they give you a preference, because you live here, you're part of the community, so they give you this hiring preference. But then after one year, it's not, it's not a couple. It's many, many, many are saying bye. And it's like, I'm only doing this to get the job, and then as quick as I can, I'm getting the heck out of Holyoke. And that's concerning, because I feel bad for the people that didn't get the job, you know? Those are the people I feel sorry for. So anyways, on that note, we have this order before us. Any other thoughts, comments on this?
Motion.
Motion. Motion on the floor is to receive and adopt the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 11C.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I was meaning to do this during your president report, but I failed, I forgot. But I just wanted, on behalf of myself and probably the City Council as well, congratulate our city clerk on completing the necessary coursework for becoming, I think, the first Holyoke-certified municipal clerk. I know that's a big thing, and I just want to say that I'm very proud to know you and have you, make sure you've done that. And I think it's a fantastic thing, so congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, Brown.
My brother Patrick will be very happy. He spent a week at Plin State. That's where he went to college. Thank you.
Very good. Can we see your report card? No, I'm kidding. No, I'm kidding. Congratulations, Brenna. We, that was not, that was not easy. It was a lot of work, and we appreciate your efforts. Okay, so we now have 11C before us, counselors. This is a committee report from ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the City Council consider the acceptance of some private ways in the city of Holyoke as public ways. Have considered the same. Recommend it be referred to the Public Safety Committee for consideration. Counselors Vacan, Lisi, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
And can we also have a copy to that committee with all the streets that aren't public ways yet?
Right, and I requested that. Somebody said that's floating around.
That list, that list was generated.
I haven't yet to see.
One or two years ago.
I think we followed an order, you and I.
We did.
We did receive it. I don't know if I could find it.
Somebody comes across that, could they send that to Counselor Leahy and I, or maybe the DPW?
But I know we did receive it.
Can we send a copy to DPW?
Yeah.
Send a copy to all the members of the Public Safety.
I'd like to see the list of private ways again. There's quite a few, actually. Somebody told me there's about 40, 35, 40 of them. Yeah. Okay, so only the Public Safety Committee has to have a public hearing, and they can only be the only ones to accept a public way. So that's why I think.
Correct. So this really is a housekeeping matter to get it in the proper committee for action.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Over to Public Safety. 11D. 11D is a committee report from ordinance, to whom was referred an order that an ordinance or special act be created to provide for the city to accept a host community agreement, who with the consent of the mayor and City Council for any medical marijuana facility to be located in the city, have considered the same. Recommend that this order has been complied with. Counselors Vacan, Lisi, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counselor Vacan.
We had general discussion in committee, because at the time, although I know we'll be addressing it later, we had an active application before us that would be heard on the 27th. Although I understand there's an update in that regard, but I guess it would suffice to say that there's agreement that we would seek such a host agreement should that development occur.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and the other point is Kara was able to illuminate us that if any entity gives the city money, i.e. the mayor signs a host community agreement with X entity that says, we'll pay Holyoke $100,000 a year in taxes, that, to receive those funds already requires, under state law, the approval of the City Council. So we basically have a check in place on this. So therefore, the spirit of this order is really already captured under state law. I would just note that I did hear from a canary today that there may be a different applicant for a medical marijuana facility. So I don't know if this is true or not, but fairly reliable source. So we'll see if there's an application. But I hadn't seen an application here yet, so.
The same process would apply.
Same process will apply for all, one and all. Yep. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Finance committee reports.
Mr. President, if the council wants, I could make a motion to suspend the rules and take up 12A, B, C, D, F, and G. No E, because that was tabled.
Second.
Okay. So the whole, the whole package there.
And the reason I do that, and like I said, I'll do whatever the council wants, the full committee approved it. There was, there was no.
Sounds like a good idea, Counselor. Motion is to suspend the rules to take up all the finance committee reports, except for 12E, which was tabled in committee, as a package, and we'll vote, we'll discuss all of them as a package and vote on all of them as a package. They're all the acceptance of grants and establishments of funds for that purpose. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. 12A is a grant related to the acceptance of the New England Scenic Trail Connector Grant. 12B is the acceptance of the provisions of the NEH Teaching Institutes Grant. 12C is acceptance of the provisions of the 2016 Burn Memorial Local Solicitation Grant. 12D is accepting the provisions of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. 12F is the acceptance of the provisions of the Financial Forecasting and Capital Planning Grant. And lastly, 12G, which is acceptance of the provisions of the State Homeland Security Grant. All of these were approved in committee, recommended for adoption by the full city council from all five members of the Finance Committee. I now turn it over to the Chairman, Counselor McGee, for a motion.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading?
Motion has been made at second to receive and adopt the committee reports on all of these items, and approve the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Alright, so I'll go through each and every one. If someone has a question, just point out the number, you know, twelve A question, and I'll answer.
Yep.
Alright, so for twelve A, Andrew Smith came in. This is a grant for fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. In essence, what it's doing is it's creating a trail on a piece of property where we have an easement up by, uh, Mountain Road. Um, there was lengthy discussion as to parking and everything else. I mean, that's kinda still out there as to the ultimate place of parking, but really, we're accepting the grant to then create a one-mile trail that connects, uh, the Mountain Road area to the scenic, uh, New England scenic overlook area. Um, within that, what we'll receive is a footbridge, two other bridges, some kiosks, a bench, and then the actual trail itself. So that's what the grant is covering. There is a match of twenty percent, but it's not a city dollar match. It's really, we have a group that's volunteering to do, you know, the building of the trail and pruning everything else, and do that type of volunteer. That covers the match. So there's no dollar match by the city. The next one is the NEH, uh, teaching grant. That's from Wisteriahurst Museum, which really what they're doing there is, that's a hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. It's a two-week teaching training, of which what they'll do is they'll invite in local teachers, uh, Hoyoke teachers, to get trained, uh, or teachings on, you know, history of Hoyoke, women in history. From there, the following week, they'll do a training for anyone countrywide. So have teachers come in to learn about Hoyoke and, and the women in Hoyoke. And the way it's designed is the hub will be, uh, Wisteriahurst Museum, but they will go around the city, to the library, to, uh, touring facilities, so on and so forth. So it's, it's a cool concept. Two weeks of training, first for us, and then bringing a bunch of people into Hoyoke and, and show them what we have to offer. No match. So just a hundred and twenty-three thousand for that. The next one is from the Police Department. That is a standard grant that we receive all the time. That one is for the amount of, let me get the numbers for you. Thirty-five thousand four hundred. It's the JAG grant, which we receive annually, of which what we'll do is we'll use it for radios, um, forensic cameras, and then some training. So it's the Justice Assistant Grant that we receive every year. Thirty-five thousand four hundred. No match from the city. Uh, with regards to twelve D, uh, this is a very good one. This is for the firefighters. A hundred and ninety-five thousand, but really, the Fed's gonna give us a hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-three. The city matched to that, and this is dollars that we have to put in, seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, for, for the grand total of a hundred and ninety-five thousand. What that represents is, due to the NFPA requirements, every ten years, we have to turn over the firefighters' uniforms, because they just become unsafe. This will give us fifty complete uniforms from head to toe. So we'll get fifty brand-new uniforms or outfits, fire outfits, for our firefighters. The next one, we skip E, 'cause that's been tabled for more information. For twelve F, this is the one from Bellamy's office. This is up to forty thousand. If we accept the grant, up to forty thousand will be used to hire, um, consultants from UMass to help in Bellamy's area with regards to capital bu- uh, budgeting training or long-range planning for the city of Hoyoke. And depending on what modules they show us and what things that we like, Bellamy can select from there to try and help the city in a financial going forward. No city match with regards to that. The final one is the, uh, State Homeland Security Grant. That's for our auxiliary police department. Three thousand five hundred dollars for them to get new radios. It only purchases two radios, but it's new radios for them for communication purposes. No city match for that as well.
Was there any questions on any of those councilors? Very pretty straightforward. Okay. So no further discussion? Okay, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made at seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting all of these finance grants. Uh, no vote is to deny all.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnan? Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thirteen yays.
By your vote, you've approved, uh, all of the Finance Committee reports. We had no public safety, public service, DGNR, chartering rules, or joint city council and school committee reports for this particular meeting. We now move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Item number eighteen. Item number eighteen is introduced by Counselor Sullivan that seven thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents be paid out of free cash to pay school department custodial fees and utilities charged the Hoyoke Leeds basketball, or such fees charged by the school department be waived.
Make the motion to send to Finance?
Okay. Motion's been made at seconded to receive and refer to Finance. Any discussion? Or we'll wait till committee? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And if the Law Department could just, a copy to the Law Department to get a legal review on that too. Public funds for private organization, just review that. Um, unless it's in some sort of waiver, that's might be different. Item number nineteen from Counsel Vacan ordered that request the city engineer evaluate and add a crosswalk at the top of Kane Road where Kane meets Vermont if feasible. Children in the area, uh, walk to school.
Receive, adopt, and refer to DPW and the city engineer.
Okay. Motion's been made at second to receive, adopt, and refer to the city engineer. Do we need any traffic change there?
I don't know, but once the engineer looks, I guess we, he could let.
Should we send a copy to ordinance too?
Maybe just in case.
I think so, just in case. I think since it's new, you know, it's a traffic. So motion is to send a copy to ordinance and send the main order over to the DPW city engineer. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number twenty comes to us from Counsel Vacan. Ordered that place speed limit signs on Clayton Road or other side streets off of Homestead that are being used to cut through from Homestead to Route two oh two, so that police can enforce. There has been an increase in safety concerns in the neighborhood with drivers cutting through at high speeds during rush hours.
Uh, receive and refer to ordinance. I think we might have to have a discussion about the speed limit.
Okay. Do you wanna change the speed limit, or just put up the signs?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to receive, refer to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item twenty-one from Counsel Vacan. That companies such as Waste Management and others comply with the noise ordinance. Refrain from emptying dumpsters outside of the seven AM to eleven PM timeframe in residential areas. The creation of a loud and excessive noise in connection with loading and unloading, et cetera, et cetera, and then it states what the ordinance is. So.
Receive, adopt, and refer to the Police Department for enforcement?
Yep. And, um, I'd say also the Board of Health too. Yeah. To, I'd have Waste Management be sent a letter from Board of Health. Give it to one of the code enforcements.
I'm not sure it's just them. I mean, this is the most recent complaint.
Right.
At my man's school.
Okay.
But, but I receive complaints from different areas of the world as well.
Okay, so could we amend it to, um...
I was just using that as an example, such as, not to exclusively target one company. I was just aware of that one.
Right.
Right.
You see this with the street sweepers and the other things. Some, some of the, they jump the gun on some of these things. Um, okay, so, uh, motion is to send a copy to the Board of Health and the Police Department and request that a letter be sent to Waste Management.
And others that are violating the ordinance.
Yep.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-two. Introduced by Counsel Valentin that a handicap sign be placed to one, in front of one forty-three Oak for Maribel Perez. Ordinance with.
Refer to ordinance and a copy to Disabilities Commission?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, can we take twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six as a package, please?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six as a package? Sure. Motion to suspend the rules to take twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-three is introduced by Counsel Bartley. City council create an ordinance relative to resident-only parking on McIntosh Terrace that would allow parking on street, on the north side of the street from nine to seven, only for cars that are registered with the city and that display the necessary decal. Further, city council establish relevant signage. Twenty-four. City council review city laws relative to the licensing of bed and breakfasts. Specifically, city council ensure that approval of the Building Commissioner and HFD are necessary prerequisites. And item number twenty-six, introduced by Bartley and Jordane. The city council consider an on-street parking ban for the winter months for certain streets that due to accumulated snowfall become too narrow and impede or prevent emergency vehicles from passing through.
Um, so I just wanna make a motion to send all these to ordinance, if I could?
Second.
Yep. Motion is to send all of these to ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-eight. So moved. Twenty-five, introduced by Counsel Bartley. City council invite the new DPW superintendent to a future meeting of public service?
I refer public service.
Okay. Uh, or public safety.
Well, uh, I, either one, just.
Well, normally, public safety's DPW. That's the only reason I mention that.
Sure. That's fine.
Alright. Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, the maker of the order, if we're gonna be added onto that. Think that's a great, uh, thing to get to meet the new, new guy in town.
Yeah, Mr. McManus, yes. That would be good.
Mr. President, through the maker, if I could be added as well?
Sure. Counsel, and Counsel Roman.
Might as well put down Counsel Soto, too.
Absolutely. Okay, so a friendly amendment to send to Public Safety, and, uh, adding co-sponsors Tomlin and Roman. All in favor of adopting, uh, referring to the Public Safety Committee? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Counsel Bartley introduces to us item number twenty-seven, which is that the Police Department start to strictly enforce City Ordinance eighty-six dash two eleven prohibiting the operation of heavy commercial vehicles on Hitchcock Street.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, can I just give this leave to withdraw? I just wanna make a quick comment, if I could.
Sure. Motion is to leave to withdraw. Is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion, Counsel.
Yeah, so there was just, I want, really wanna thank Marcos and, and Johnny Dyjek. Uh, there were a lot of numerous complaints about Chevy trucks traveling down there, and it turns out all the... And one of the neighbors on it actually filed a truck too, which, I don't know why she did that, but she filed it down to a construction site. But we figured out this is for Parsons Paper. Uh, the, Parsons Paper is not cooperating. Their, their trucks are not taking the appropriate route. So, but they're doing that because Marcos and John really kinda stepped up to their plate. They, on my request, went to visit them and told them that there's an ordinance on the, on the books.
Yep.
Um, so we're, we're, we're good to go on this one. So, thank you.
I had a similar situation with, uh, the fellas down here at the, uh, transfer facility, and I brought it to him, and he was very cooperative. In our case, it was West Franklin Street. So he's using, I, you know, to stay on the main roads, you know, beach and whatnot, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
So they were very helpful.
Yep.
Okay?
All good.
All in favor of withdrawing?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item twenty-eight introduced by Counsel Graney. That winter parking regulations be enforced to the letter of the law on all side streets from Woods to Cherry, running east-west between Hillside and North Hampton. Cars that violate this ordinance are safety hazard, must be towed immediately to allow passage of all public safety vehicles.
Yeah, Mr. President, what I'd like to do is piggyback this with, uh, your, your order, and David Bartley's order on twenty-six, to see what we can do.
Sure.
These are specific problem streets.
Yes.
That, uh, that happen in the wintertime every year, and we get constituent requests all the time for them. And I'm sure there are other streets in the city that, that like this, but we have to do something to fix this problem just for the safety of our residents.
Yes, you're abso- you're absolutely right.
So if we go to, uh, Public Safety, Hoyoke Police Department, I don't know where you.
Well, we could probably adopt this with, um, to send it to the police with a copy to ordinance, 'cause that's where the other one went.
Alright, that's fine.
Okay. Can I be added as a co-sponsor?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, if I could be added. I, I was approached by an individual, lives on one of these side streets the other day, and, uh, one of them, the greatest generation, you know who he is. Todd knows who he is, and, uh...
Rook line.
Rook line, yeah.
Take care of the, uh, the streets there, so I'd, every year.
Adding Counsel Leahy.
No stone unturned.
Yes.
Unbelievable.
Counsel Leahy's been added. So, uh, motion on the floor is to receive, adopt the order, send it to the Police Department with a copy to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. Uh, item number twenty-nine, introduced by Counsel Jordane. The city council adopt a resolution in opposition to the legalization of recreational use of marijuana in Massachusetts. Sent a letter to our state delegation and the governor to this effect. Um, I'll say by way of openers on this, that this was obviously filed. Uh, adding Counsel Leahy's name as a co-sponsor.
Add Graney to that, please.
And Graney. Uh, as you know, uh, our chief executive elected to be, in a press release, the first mayor in Massachusetts to go on to endorse the recreational use of marijuana. So this isn't now medical use, this is strictly, smoke it as you wish. And, um, I felt that not all of us in the city hold that view. Uh, and, uh, I felt to, to counterbalance, uh, that view, uh, to give a more balanced approach, in my opinion, if it's the will of the council, uh, that the governor and the state delegation and otherwise be aware that not all of us share the mayor's view that, uh, you know, smoke all the pot you want, all day walking around, and that, uh, that recreational use of marijuana is not helpful, is a net negative to the community. Uh, that we recognize that there's now this medical use, but now, as some of us had projected, predicted, by the way, some, uh, that the next step was gonna be just total legalization. Basically, you're Colorado. Um, just do whatever you want and, um, smoke all the weed you want. I don't feel that's helpful to our kids. I don't feel it's helpful to our society. I don't feel it's certainly helpful to this community, which lord knows has its drug problems and, uh, has property crime problems. So, that's, that's the, uh, that's the resolution before us. Um, we can have a discussion. We could have it sent to committee if people think they really need to study the issue. I will say, uh, I wouldn't want it to sit in committee for very long, 'cause the vote is coming up in November. And the motion. If people feel they already know their opinions, one way or the other, yes, no, maybe people are for this, then we can just take a vote. Counsel Roman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see this go to committee, only for the sake to have discussion, um, and express my opinions and hear from our constituents, to see if they all share in the same regard.
Well, it's, it's, isn't it our vote?
It's, it's our opinion.
Our opinion.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not here to, I'm not taking a poll. I'm not rasping.
It's not a referendum.
No. Uh, I'm not here to particularly what's everybody else's view. I'm here to state my view, as the mayor has stated his view. Now, if the mayor probably didn't come out so strongly saying, "Hoyoke, Hoyoke, Hoyoke", 'cause for better or for worse, he represents the city as the chief executive, and I felt this was important to say, uh, you know, not all of us share that opinion. Counsel McGivern.
I, I understand it's our opinion, but I think our vote is for our constituents, too.
Right.
I'd like to at least have an idea of what their opinion is. Um, I don't think we can have a public hearing, but at least a public forum might help, and I agree with Counsel, uh, Counsel Roman.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? Alright. So, uh, motion on the floor is to send to the...
Public Service Committee.
Public.
Public Safety.
Public.
Safety issue, isn't it?
Probably would be public safety, yeah, so. So, so motion on the floor is to send a Public Safety Committee. We'll see what people's opinions are of that in a minute. Counsel Graney.
Yeah, well, wouldn't it help if, uh, we expressed our feelings on this tonight? Just so that, uh, the public knows how each individual counselor feels. I would certainly like to address it right now, 'cause I'm definitely opposed to this.
Right. Oh, and I, I anticipate requesting a roll call vote. Uh, the mayor, I don't believe he had a public hearing and a, and a, you know, open up the, the doors of City Hall and say, "Will all my constituents please walk by and give me your opinion" before he sent out his press release. Um, but nevertheless, if that's what we wanna do, have open court on it. I mean, I, I'm always willing to listen to people, so. Counsel Graney, did you, you up the floor? Did you wanna state your opinion, or?
Yeah, I just, uh, I think that's something that each individual counselor should take a stand on right now. I, I, let's get it out there. I mean, this is something that shouldn't be delayed. I mean, I'm opposed to this. I mean, if somebody's for it, all well and good, but the public should know how we feel on the issue.
Very good. Counsel Vacan.
In that spirit, I'll offer a motion to receive and adopt a resolution.
Okay. Alright. So, we're either gonna adopt, so we'll see how people wanna vote now, or vote after committee. So we'll, we'll take it that way. So, uh, the second motion was to adopt. Um, so we'll see what happens with that. Alright. So, uh, any other discussion on it? Alright. Counsel Roman.
Since we're gonna take up the first motion to adopt, I figure I will express to you what I was hoping that we would kind of discuss this in committee to my colleagues, and everyone's entitled to their personal opinions. Uh, I just feel that, similar to, the only other unanimous kind of consent that came out of here, I knew when we were gonna do the Charter School one ahead of time. Uh, I didn't, you know, I didn't know that we were gonna, and again, I got my agenda, I must've skipped over this item. But I didn't know we were gonna take this specific resolution up this evening, so I apologize to my colleagues for that. I wasn't prepared. Um, but when it came to either Oscar, or, you know, even my colleague Valentin's resolution or order of support, we sent it to committee to have that discussion. But since we're gonna vote on adoption or not, uh, and we have to take a stand, I am in full support. I am in full support of recreational marijuana, and here's why. To communities of colors or Latinos, a lot of individuals in the community get arrested and medical's totally legal at the moment. However, for someone living with HIV and AIDS like myself, I can't afford my medical card. My annual salary last year was only $20,000. This year, I'm making a little bit more, thank God, to my new job and this job right here. But for me to get my medical card and for me to go and do what I have to do, it's an arm and a leg. I'm gonna go get my medical card and do it the right way, but I was a man on the street. And at one point, I had to go out on the street to get my medical, my non-medical marijuana, to be able to alleviate pain and symptoms. And I know there's individuals and men and women out there who need it, but it's mostly communities of colors and Latinos who are affected by getting arrested by having an ounce over the legal limit of pot. And then they get incarcerated. And then they end up in jail. And then there's recidivism. And then they stay on the streets. So when you talk about trying to legalize, it's getting it out of the hands of the illegal drug dealers and let's put a tax on it. Let's control it like we do tobacco. Let's control it like we do alcohol. And that lowers the crime rates. Let's get those guys and girls who know how to cut it, weight it, measure it, get them real jobs in order to do that. And let's regulate it as a council. So we control, similar to we do, whether it's a methadone clinic or we do with a medicinal marijuana facility, let's regulate where it goes. Since we're talking about the passage or not, I will vote against this because I feel it impacts a community which I represent dearly. And as someone who was homeless and in the streets, I know that it impacts those people. Because when you're a young man or woman and you have a criminal record at all, and that's why I do have pending an ordinance committee, a resolution banning the box, where you have to check off if you've been convicted in the past, because if you've done your time, you've gone through the sheriff's department, you should have been habilitated. But when you pass a resolution like this, it sends a message to myself and other individuals in the community who are deeply impacted by this and arrested on it on a day-to-day basis, that you are not, I don't know, I just, I feel like if we're gonna bring it up, I'm gonna state it clearly so my colleagues know. We always don't have to agree on every issue. This is one where I'm not on agreement. And so I'll be voting no, and I just wanted to state that publicly.
Okay, very good. Anybody else want to state their opinion? Council McGivern?
I'd like to talk about the presidential election and about who we're supporting for president. And I think it's important our opinions to get out there.
Good.
I second it.
All right. Turn away.
I really believe this should go to committee. I believe that, I have my own opinion. I'd be happy to share. I'd be happy to share with anyone. But it's not always, Mr. President, because sometimes we have to take votes that aren't our individual opinion. Sometimes we have to take votes that are actually of a majority of, we think, of people out there, of voters, constituents, or people who are affected by any issue before us. This is not a very complicated issue, but this state has complicated this issue by, and so has other states, by separating medical marijuana, recreational marijuana. Marijuana is a civil. It's not even a crime anymore, possession of marijuana, providing you're under that ounce limit. The courts don't know how to handle that. The courts are looking at it as an important part of the culture of drug use. But at the same time, alcohol is a drug. So they deal with it. They deal with it the best they can. There's a lot at stake, I think, in terms of this, but I think it's the voters who ultimately will decide this. We're not a fair election this year. And I think I, you know, I'd love, I have no reason not to want to weigh in on this question, but I'd love to hear from some people as to what their opinions are and to see if it's contrary or agrees with my opinion. So I'm voting no to see if we can get it into committee.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Three members would be required to ask for a roll call vote. Roll call. Is there a third that wants a roll call vote on this?
Sure, roll call.
Okay. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is on adoption of item number twenty-nine, which is in opposition to the recreational use of marijuana. A no vote is to not do that.
Tomlin?
Could you explain that again?
Sure, yeah, no problem.
It's a little confusing.
A little confusing.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the order, which is that we are resolved in opposition to the legalization of the recreational use of marijuana in Massachusetts and to send a letter to our state delegation and the governor to this effect. A yes vote is to say you're in opposition. A no vote is to say you're not in opposition, or I guess...
Like to say, if you want to send it to committee, then it's something separate, then it's a different vote. We're not doing that vote?
No, because the motion to adopt came after the motion to send to committee.
Okay.
It was amended to just adopt. So...
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
No.
Lisi?
No.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Roman?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Six a, seven nays?
Six a, seven nays.
On the main motion?
Second.
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 President, the order was defeated.
The order was defeated.
Right.
Unless there's a motion to reconsider our action and send it to committee, then that's how it'll stand.
Does anybody just, does anybody just second on motion?
It was...
No, 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 the order, no, the motion on the floor was to adopt this order and to approve the resolution. If there's now no motion to reconsider...
Motion to reconsider.
That's the end of it.
Second.
Okay. So the motion, because some people may be voting no, because they wanted it to go to committee. Or they're just not, they're for recreational use. It's up to them. Motion has been made to reconsider from Council McGee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And the choice is, do you go to what committee? Public safety?
Second.
Motion on the floor has been made and seconded to send it to the Public Safety Committee. Motion to reconsider requires a majority vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So moved. And off to the Public Safety Committee it is. Okay.
All right, Mr. President.
That takes care of twenty-nine. So that's in public safety.
We do thirty and thirty-one as a package?
Second.
Thirty, thirty-one. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up thirty and thirty-one as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Thirty and thirty-one were both introduced by Council Leahy, that the Department of Public Works paint a do not block the intersection at the intersection of Columbus Avenue and North Hampton Street. Thirty-one is that the DPW provide the city council with the amount it costs on average per year for the last four years on signage requested by the council. This was a constituent request.
Received adopts in the DPW?
Second.
Has been made and seconded to receive, adopt and refer to the DPW.
And a copy to public safety?
And a copy to public safety. Any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Council McGivern?
Real quick.
With his opinion?
Um, no, with a question. I understand and I agree with this, but a do not block the box, I know it's a state statute, but I also know we have local ordinances on some of the North Hampton Street ones and our fine applies to the local ordinance.
Yep.
In order for this to be enforced, I'm not sure what Council Leahy's looking for, do we need an ordinance?
All right, make a motion to send the ordinance committee, because you're probably right.
Yeah.
You would definitely need an ordinance, that's...
Ordinance for the local fine. You can enforce the state statute, but it's just, just needs to move along.
The, um, thank you for raising that. And then the other point, because you're absolutely right, it would require an ordinance. The other thing is, why Columbus Avenue? I think it might be, could be Columbus, it could be Belvedere, it could be Woods. I don't know which one to pick.
I could tell you the reason.
Or multiples. I mean, it's a real problem. You're absolutely right.
The reason being is the lights are right there.
Yeah.
And that's the first street from the lights, if you're going north.
Yeah.
And I actually think, I thought, maybe Council McGee had filed this. I thought it was either one of you guys filed this order. When you're parked there at the end of Columbus Ave and there's a red light.
Yep.
Three cars line up, you can't get out.
Right.
It's next to impossible.
It's same, it's same from Brookline going the other way, too. If you're going south on...
Yes.
South of the light, yeah.
But I've only heard complaints on Columbus.
I wonder why?
I don't know.
I'll...
Mom and dad? But anyways, Todd?
It wasn't mom and dad. I received the complaints and I did file this way back when and it was not adopted. What they chose to do is put a sign in, do not block the intersection. They put a line, or they're supposed to put a line.
Does it work?
To me, a box is there, whether you're enforcing it or not, at least it tells someone you're not supposed to stop there. And the reason for it is people coming up Sargent and turning with that traffic.
Right.
So if you're stuck on Columbus, you're trying to turn in.
Yep.
People come in, they stop at the red light, and then you have the green light coming towards from Sargent. So you can't get out at all.
Well, it's a good idea. I'm not...
Columbus is the worst. Brookline's bad. Columbus is harder because of people turning left and coming in.
Right, right. Yeah, couldn't agree more. Maybe we should send this one to ordinance.
I agree.
And then you could set the fine structure, the whole nine, just in the signage. Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. So, motion on the floor is to send thirty to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thirty-one is just to receive and adopt and answer this question.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All in favor?
Well, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Bartley?
First of all, I want to add my name to the thirty-one. Can we send a copy, Council Leahy, if I may, to the president, to the Public Safety Committee? Because I'd really like to hear more about this, instead of just getting, have them come in, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Can I do that?
Absolutely, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, receive, adopt, send to the DPW with a report back to the Public Safety Committee. Sending a copy of thirty-one to the Public Safety Committee for follow-up. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So moved. Okay, very good. And we now go to item thirty-two, which is from Council Leahy, that the War Memorial Commissioners, commanders of three-twenty-five, three-fifty-one, VFWs and Lieutenant Walsh from the Soldiers Home convene a meeting with the Public Service Committee to discuss the funding or erecting a memorial to the victims of nine-eleven, so the city of Hoyok can honor them on the anniversary of this tragic event.
We'll make a motion to receive, adopt and send to Public Service with a copy to one of these people.
Yep.
And also, we would like to introduce Lieutenant Walsh into the city of Hoyok.
Yes. That sounds great. So, receive, refer to the Public Safety Committee with copies to all these individuals. And you know what would be really nice is if we could get a piece of the World Trade Center, like some of the other communities have. Like Ludlow has a piece of the beam.
Yeah.
I don't know how one would even request to do that, but they have a beautiful memorial on Chapin Street. If that, but maybe they, we can find that out.
We can.
That would be nice.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just a, another friendly amendment. Bennett's a colonel, so if we could just...
Oh, give him a promotion?
Yeah, just update his rank.
Good. Amend lieutenant to colonel.
And then, just as FYI, I did file an order and we passed, and he's gonna come into the DGR committee at some point at the close, when we get closer to Veterans Day. So he's gonna, he's gonna come in at that, but this is great as well. This is tremendous order, but...
This is great. It's a really good order.
Thank you.
It's a good, really, really...
Mr. President?
Council Tomlin?
Is it possible to add on to possibly the police chief and fire chief with that? Since it affected, you know...
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think to let them know to get into that.
Yep.
I think it would be very important to have them there.
Firemen and police officers died, that, absolutely.
Amend to add police and fire chief. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Close, so moved.
Anybody that wants to sign on, feel free.
I'm sure all of us would want to be.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred percent supportive of that, so...
For the mayor.
Certainly all of us. So, motion is to send this to Public Safety with copies to everybody here, also reminding police and fire. And if we could put that together to see some of the logistics, that would be great to have a nine, nine-eleven. I know Westfield has a nice one, too.
Do.
Um...
They do.
And of course, they lost three people in Westfield, too, at the World Trade Center. Council Lisi?
Uh, thank you. I wasn't here in two thousand and one, so I was just wondering if we have any recollection of whether or not we sent fire and police down to New York for the emergency?
I know, I know that they had happened. I mean, I'm sure everybody knows where they were, but I remember I was working, I was a state employee at the time, working for the Mass Department of Transportation, and they sent all the state workers home. And we all convened, I think, I remember Counselor Jordan and Counselor McGivern. We went to the fire station.
That's right.
Because we didn't know what was happening. We weren't sure about the five reservoirs that we have, where the Hoyok Mall.
Right.
And it was quite an alarming experience for the city of Hoyok.
But do we know if we sent police and fire down there? Because I know that we're, you know, regional efforts to support.
Something tells me yes on the rescue components of it, that they basically tried every sort of rescue thing. We can get you an answer to that, though.
I really, I would like that.
Yeah, that would, that's a, my gut tells me yes. And, you know...
And if so, it would be great to recognize those individuals that went down in some way or...
Right, right, absolutely. Okay.
Hey, keep in mind, too, the first person who passed away, the first official person, was a father, Father Judge. And he was well-known. He came to the city of Hoyok. His group of people were acknowledged by the Hoyok St. Patrick's Parade Committee as JFK Award winners. And you see that awful picture of, you know, the public service people carrying the father out. It's very moving.
You know, it's really an amazing thing, too. I mean, obviously a major event in our nation. But just the whole Hoyok angle, I don't know a particular Hoyok angle to nine-eleven, but as we're talking about teachers coming in and learning about the history of Hoyok, I mean, you go around these monuments, how many people we lost in the Great War, World War II, Vietnam. I mean, Hoyok people, it's just incredible. The amount of the people with the stars and the gallantry, you know, guys like George Hogan. People need to know those stories.
They do.
People need to, people need to see, I mean, the incredible bravery of the people. You know, how many people we lost in the Civil War, you know? It's just incredible. I think it was something, I remember, I have this at home, but it was at least sixty-something people. We lost the city of Hoyok residents in the Civil War. I mean, nobody, you know, that, the Lady Monument at the, you know, Veterans Park, I mean, that's what that's in commemoration of, is the Civil War. And it's just fascinating, people. All those stories, you know, as the generations go, you start to lose some of that history. It's very important to remember that. So, good order. So, on moving, sending to Public Safety with copies to all these individuals, all in favor?
Is it safety or service?
Uh, I...
Service.
Service, correct. Sending to Public Service with copies to all the individuals named. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number thirty-three comes to us from Council McGee, and that is that the DPW provide the city council with an updated list on the use of temporary speed bumps. The list should include all streets where the temps have been requested, when they will be installed, and when will a traffic report be provided to the council with regard to these streets.
Receive, adopt, send to DPW with a request for an answer in two weeks?
Yep. Motion to amend this order to say, request information within two weeks. Two weeks. Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt and refer to the DPW for this information. Very good order. I couldn't tell you where they are at any given moment. I don't think, and we've all requested them at one point or another. So any other discussion, Council McGee, or, okay. On adoption, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirty-four, introduced by Council McGee. That the ordinance committee look into increasing the fines on property owners who violate the ordinance when performing illegal car repair on their property.
Refer to ordinance?
Second.
Can I be added as a cosponsor on this one? Thank you. Motion on the floor is to receive, refer to ordinance. Under discussion, Council McGivern?
If we could just send a copy to the Law Department and get the definition of what illegal repairs are. It gets very confusing, I think, to some of our enforcement agents. And I think it's hard for them to enforce something that they think is not illegal, but is.
Right. And of course, if they, any change would have to be signed off by the Law Department. So they do all those reviews, for sure. So, a motion on the floor is to send to ordinance with a review by the Law Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. So, that is the end of the formal agenda. Now we go to wrap up the late file section, which we've taken care of a few items. The first is late file A, which comes to us by way of a communication from Attorney Joan Deeds of Hoyok. Attorney Deeds writes to us as follows. "Please be advised that debilitating medical condition treatment centers, Inc., hereby withdraws the application for a special permit to operate a registered medical marijuana dispensary submitted on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Sincerely, Joan Deeds." Make a motion that we suspend the rules to take up final action on this item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Make a motion that we receive this. And do we want to make a motion to remove that item from committee at this time?
It's a little complicated because the ad has been placed for the hearing.
So we'll go through that procedural stuff at next...
I think we will have to at the committee meeting.
All right. So, a motion that this... All right. So, um, a motion that this be received and refer to copy over to ordinance.
Second.
They'll handle the procedural end of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file C, introduced by Counselor Sullivan, that the Sewer Commission and the Water Commission be merged to form one board. Charter and rules?
Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to send the charter and rules. It's a long agenda. I'm sure the chairman can take care of that. Uh, all in favor, signing the charter and rules?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file D, introduced by Counselor McGee, $112,000. Be approved for use from the sale of real estate, Chapter 44, to purchase three new police cars. Finance?
Finance.
Motion on the floor is to send that to Finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file E is the regretful resignation letter of our esteemed city solicitor.
If we don't accept it.
Motion to deny.
Yeah, if we don't accept it.
We don't accept, you have to stay, right? Hold you against your will. Um, so, uh, motion is just to accept this, uh, receive this communication. Motion's been made and seconded to receive this communication. Shall I read it? Uh, "Please accept this as my formal resignation from my position as Assistant City Solicitor effective September 30, 2016. As you were, after much consideration, I've decided to accept a new position. It's truly been my pleasure to serve the city of Hoyoke for the past nine years. I'm very grateful for the opportunities that I've had over the years, here to take on additional responsibilities within the Law Department, to work with a wide variety of interesting projects, and work with many talented people, both inside and outside City Hall, in particular, my colleagues in the Law Department, who I am confident will continue to provide excellent, exceptional legal services to the city. I look forward to partnering with the city of Hoyoke in my new position, as well as to seeing Hoyoke continue to progress and develop in the upcoming years. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve the city of Hoyoke, Carol Lamb Cunha, Assistant City Solicitor."
Take a motion to amend to 2018?
Motion to receive is on, on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We have late file G, introduced by Counselor Roman, that the city council consider the application of Frankie Santos, senior, at the Paulo Ferreira Social Justice Charter School to the Hoyoke, uh, to the youth counselor seat, cover letter and resume forwarded to the admin and to disseminate to all councilors. So, this is[1703.16]